So I've asked Lisa, we do this every year after an election. She comes in, she gives us the conflict of interest, open meeting law.
Administrator, open meeting law, public records, brief, not, we're not doing a whole big, brief overview.
No, and maybe she should talk about our code of ethics because that needs to be updated, so.
That's in it too.
Yeah, so, Lisa, take it away.
So that's what I'm gonna do, and I'm gonna go over the following items. And if you have any questions about this afterwards, always feel free to call me. If you think you have a conflict of interest question or whatever, you're allowed to call me directly on that because that's a matter between me and you, and then we'll go from there. So the overarching controlling laws and regulations or policies that govern the board of selectmen are the Town Administrators Act, the Act Establishing the Selectment and Administrator Form of Government, and the Act Increasing the Membership of the Board of Selectmen. Remember, it used to be three, we went up to five. Board of Selectmen Code of Ethics that was adopted in 2019, open meeting law, public records law, and conflict of interest law, in addition to your bylaws, but those are the general overarching things. So in 2008, the town voted to move from a three-person board of selectmen to a five-person board of selectmen, now select board, I guess I should update this. And the board may only act as a whole. So even though you are each, all individuals elected individually, your authority comes from the group as a whole. So somebody can't go out and say, "I'm a member of the board of selectmen, so you must." You're not allowed to do that. The Board of Selectmen act as a whole. It's important, of course, to represent your constituents, but again, you can't say to the constituent, "I will fix this by doing acts." What you would say is, "I'll take it to the board, I'll take it to the town administrator, we'll see what we can do, and somebody will get back to you," kind of thing. And that's what I, members should bring matters to the board and realize their full authority with the board overall. At times, the board sits as other legal entities. So you'll sit as the licensing authority under the state liquor license laws, right? So you issue the liquor licenses in town, you issue the entertainment licenses in town. You're also the special permit granting authority under the zoning laws. So there are certain permitted uses by special permit in the zoning laws that make you sit as the special permit granting authority. So not the zoning board, not the planning board, but the select board. And in those instances, you have to follow the rules of the zoning bylaw in Chapter 40A. But there are, there are instances where you do sit as the special permit granting authority. So what was the Town Administrators Act and essentially what did it do? With the adoption of the Town Administrators Act, the town moved from essentially having one member of the board of selectmen run the town to a town administrator. I have a lot of familiarity with that because when I was mayor and we were bringing water and sewer out to Plum Island, Angie was on the board of selectmen and he was the head board of selectmen, and all the negotiations I did with the town in Newbury were directly with Angie and DEP. So the town moved from that in 2008 to a five-member board of selectmen and to hiring a professional town administrator. The administration of the fiscal, prudential, and municipal affairs of the town remain in the executive branch, that is, the board, including appointment of the police chief and its officers, town council, and a few others, and the board retained the authority to adopt policies and set forth the general direction of the town. You set forth the policies and the general direction, and the administrator implements those. The board is required to hire a town administrator to supervise and manage the day-to-day operations of the town, to hire and fire personnel not otherwise designated to be appointed by the board, to report to the board on the operations of the town, to create and administer the budget of the town, to prosecute and defend or compromise litigation, to manage town property, to report to the board of selectmen wrongdoing, wrongdoing of employees. Those are, to name a few. So for example, there are some towns where the board of selectmen have to approve, like the signing of a lease. Not in Newbury because you have a special act that says the town administrator does that. In some towns, if you have litigation, it's the board of selectmen who decides whether to litigate or not. And in this instance, that falls with the town administrator. However, as you all know, given what we do here, that always comes to you for a discussion so that the board is informed and knows what to do, and the town administrator and the board work very closely on any litigation that involves the town. So anybody have any questions about the Town Administrators Act, board of selectmen? All right, so here was Newman Salt Road, Road Salt Marsh last year. It's been raining too much, I haven't been able to walk out there this year. 2019, the board adopted a policy on the code of conduct for members of the select board. Some of those highlights include making sure that when the board acts, they act in the public interest, that all members comply with the laws, that the conduct of members are a becoming of select board members, that they're professional and courteous to one another and to others, that they respect the process of the board and town government. It discusses communication in and out of meetings. It discusses the use of confidential information, use of public resources, and respecting the independence of other boards and commissions. So some of that would be, for example, not trying to influence the planning board or the board of health or the ZBA in any particular manner. That's not to say that you couldn't go represent your constituents, like to stand up and say, "I, you know, I'm a member of the select board, but I'm speaking here personally, and, you know, my constituents aren't happy with this," or something like that. But respecting everybody's roles and trying not to do that behind the scenes and independently on your own. Did you, did you guys get the copy of the ethics when you got sworn in? Yeah, you got it.
It was on the website.
It's on the website.
Yeah, but it's part of your, was part of your book, wasn't it?
Oh, the book, oh yeah, you guys get a great book.
Yeah, yeah, it was in the book.
Yeah, no, that needs, I have more towns that need to do that. You have, you get a great book that has all of this stuff in it, yeah, that's great.
We just got an email today about signing the code of ethics. Is, is, is that PDF, the entire code of ethics or just a signature sheet?
No.
Because I haven't even had a chance to look at it yet.
Yeah, so I think you may have gotten an email about the Massachusetts Conflict of Interest Law ethics.
That's probably what it was.
No, Julie emailed the board and asked us to sign that.
I have, I can look it up right here.
No, it's the one, I can't think. It's the, it's the one that the town, that we voted on, this code of ethics. Yeah, I thought we signed it. Don't you remember signing it when we first passed it in 2013?
You all signed it when you passed it.
When we passed it.
Yeah, but Julie's doesn't have a record of that, so she wanted us to sign it again, and you guys should have.
There's, there's language in that code of conduct that says a newly voted select board person has to submit documentation that says they've read it.
Okay.
And received it.
So maybe that's what she's having you sign.
Yeah.
Because she, just because she doesn't have it.
Yeah, but I could have sworn we signed it.
Oh, I, I know, I've done it. I did most of the training online when.
Well, two, no, two different things, so.
Code of Ethics.
Right, two different things.
Were you here, Dana, when we did the, we actually adopted the code of ethics?
No, that was 2019.
So that's when we actually signed.
Right, so there's two different things, I want to be clear about that. There's the Board of Selectmen Code of Ethics that you adopted yourselves, okay? And in it, Bill says, it says that when there's a newly elected member, they're gonna sign it and say they received it. That's probably what Julie's trying to chase at, okay? That's different from General Law Chapter 268A, the Massachusetts Conflict of Interest Law, ethics, okay? And that has a state requirement, that you take that test every two years, online.
Online.
And that when you get sworn in, in the town clerk, she gives you a copy of those requirements in the open meeting law, but you guys get them in your book, right? So, so that's two different things, okay?
But both required.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll talk about the conflict of interest law in a minute, okay? Yeah, so this one is the local one. So one of the other things that governs this body and every public body is the open meeting law. And there are some basics. So before you have a meeting, you have to give 48 hours' notice to the public that you're gonna have a meeting, and it has to have an agenda, and the agenda has to set out in good detail so people understand what's happening, what's gonna take place on the agenda that night. If within those 48 hours or after the agenda has been posted, let's say you post the agenda a week in advance, something comes up that the chair didn't know about when the agenda was posted, the chair can supplement the agenda as having something that came up and she didn't reasonably know about at the time of the meeting. You can bypass the 48 hours if there is an emergency. And what I like to tell my towns are, if the need for the emergency starts with, "I forgot to," it's not an emergency, right? That's not an emergency. But if it snows three feet and the roof of the DBW is about to cave in, that's an emergency. And you can post a meeting as soon as you know you're gonna have to have a meeting within the 48 hours, even two hours. Do your best, post it online, post it on the doors, have the meeting about that emergency only, nothing else. A lot of COVID emergencies happened that was not unusual. I had a town in Western Mass, they didn't, they don't have internet, they didn't have a website, they couldn't post on the website, it was Friday, the town hall was closed. Schools had to shut down because there was a case that was running through the schools, and the board of health, the board of selectmen is also the board of health in that town, so they need to have an emergency meeting. So I said to the town administrator, "Just go," and they were gonna do it within an hour. Just go, put it on the front door. Emergency meeting, board of health, COVID, shut down schools, whatever it was.
So there's still a town in the western part of the state that doesn't have any internet or?
Oh, at least one.
Can you tell me where?
Oh, there's a couple of them.
Do they accept new residents?
There's a number, there's a number up in the hill towns, in, like around North Adams, outside of North Adams, that don't have.
Great Barrington, I think is one.
Well, Great Barrington has it now, but there was, yeah, there's, it's not unusual to have, not have access.
Interesting.
And they, or they don't have the bandwidth to hold remote meetings. Like they have internet, but they don't, it's not sufficient to be able to hold like Zoom meetings and stuff like that.
And there's some communities that don't have, they may have internet, but not every household has it. So the kids have to go to the library to log onto the computer to download their assignments still.
Too bad there's not an ocean out there.
In Massachusetts, it's not Appalachia.
I know, right.
But I mean, you know, it's like, in Massachusetts, this is.
Forty-eight hours doesn't include weekends or Fridays, right? That's why we posted on Thursday.
That's right, so you're closed on Fridays, so it's not a business day.
We posted Thursdays and Monday, and that's the 48 hours, essentially.
Correct.
What if Monday's a holiday?
Doesn't count, you gotta go, you would, you would, you couldn't count Monday, you'd have to count the next day.
Like, like yesterday was a federal holiday.
Correct, was a Massachusetts holiday too.
Right, so if we, we, this would have had to have been posted on Wednesday.
Well, it was posted before that.
Right, and I'm just using it as an example.
Yes, that's correct.
This one in particular would have had to have been posted on Wednesday.
That's correct.
And not Thursday because Monday being a holiday.
Correct, you got it.
That can, that can be a pretty big span.
No, you have to, you, no, you have to pay attention, the staff really has to pay attention to that.
And if you have, if you're not posted accurately or appropriately, then you have to cancel the meeting and don't meet.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That's happened.
That's happened.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the agenda, who sets the agenda? The agenda is set by the chair, that's under the open meeting law, under the regulations and the statute. And what is reasonable knowledge? You know, I said earlier, when they set the agenda, so you post a week in advance, let's say, and that night, the, that day, the chair thinks there's gonna have, you know, 10 items. And then after that time, something comes up, like you need a contract that you have to look at, or, I don't know, somebody needs a license to do something, but you can add, if the chair didn't know about it, didn't have reasonable notice when they posted the agenda, you're allowed to amend the agenda. And so what you would do is you would post a new agenda, and you would say when it was, when it was posted and what the amended item was, but you are allowed to do that.
But you can't do it in real time, it has to be posted in advance.
Right, right, you can't that night say, "Oh, I forgot," you can't do that. But you could, an hour before the meeting, update the agenda if you had to, but you can't that, like right in the meeting, you can't do that, right, that's right, Leslie. Is notice in the agenda the same thing? So you guys have all been doing this long enough, as I have. Is it, remember when you used to walk into town hall and all of the, like in January, and all of the notices for the planning board, conservation commission, board of selectmen, and zoning board were all posted for the entire year on the wall, right? So you knew every time they were gonna meet, but it was just the date and time and place. That used to be sufficient, that was your notice. But now that doesn't count anymore under the open meeting law, you actually have to have an agenda. So you actually have to full, have a full agenda or an agenda when you post your meeting to count as proper notice. So that kind of notice doesn't count anymore. You have to keep minutes of your meeting, and your minutes have to include whatever you hand out at a meeting or whatever the documents are that are attached to your agenda. Those are supposed to be attached to your minutes as well. Minutes have to be approved in regular course. So usually when you meet twice a month, you should prove the minutes within 30 days of the last meeting. The AG's office have said, you know, essentially if you're meeting regularly, you should approve your minutes regularly, so if you're on a 30-day cycle, you should make sure your minutes are approved on that cycle as well. And you may only do deliberations in a public meeting. So what are deliberations? Deliberations are discussing a matter within your jurisdiction amongst a quorum of the board, all right? So with a five-person board, that's pretty good to be able to abide by this rule. Two people can talk about anything within your jurisdiction, that's not a violation of the open meeting law. When three people outside a public meeting start to talk about matters within your jurisdiction, that's a violation of the open meeting law. This is really difficult when you have a three-member select board. And I have a couple, and it's really hard because they meet a lot because they can't talk outside because they're always a quorum, right? If two people are talking, if you're gonna talk to someone and the other person is on the board, it's a quorum of the board.
So two is a quorum and a three-person board.
That's right, that's right.
That's the problem with the zoning board of appeals right now.
Yeah, so you can't, you can't do that.
I, I have a question about that. Like last week, is schedules, if you're not talking about policy and you're not deliberating about anything that's got to do with the town, but you're talking about schedules and what the next meeting may entail, is that an open meeting law violation?
So you can go back and forth, all of you, or three of you, on scheduling, no problem, not a violation.
That's what I thought.
Now, where I have to stop you is, the next thing you said was "and entails." And I don't know what "and entails" mean, because you can't be discussing the agenda.
Well, a schedule would be, for example, a time and a place. And, and the other part of it would be what? What are we gonna talk about at that time and place?
Well, it should be the posted agenda.
So you can't do that.
You, you can talk to some extent about what's on the agenda, but not the content of what's on the agenda. That's why I had to be careful, right? So you can say, "Hey, we're gonna have on the agenda, Alicia's gonna do a presentation, you're gonna vote on a license, and then we're gonna make some appointments." That's it, you can do that. But you can't say, "We're gonna make these appointments, and boy, do not put that person on for this appointment because I do not want that person."
Yeah, that's pretty obvious.
No, I know that, but it's so, I know, but it's easy to go in that direction, right? So you have to be that way. So deliberation is discussing amongst, it doesn't matter was on the phone, doesn't matter whether it's in email or in person. The other thing is serial communication, right? So I say to myself, "Well," and this is how we used to do things when I was city councilor, right? Harold Harnch was the chair of the city council, and he knew where his votes were every time we walked into that chamber, right? Because what he would do is he'd call me up, then he'd call Leslie up, then he'd call Jeff, then he'd call her, right? That's called serial communication, and you're not allowed to do that, right? That also is a violation of the open meeting law. That is deliberating amongst the quorum, okay?
It's bad when you remember Harold Harnch and what he had in his store and everything, you know, it's still.
Well, what's funny is, is Congress does that all the time.
Well, they don't, they're not covered by the open.
Yeah, I understand.
Neither is the legislature.
No.
You couldn't really just either say, you didn't even have to get into that, you couldn't say, "Well, that doesn't really have to be on the agenda, does it?" You can't even say that.
No, you really, I mean, not, because the agenda is the chair's agenda, right?
Yeah, because then you're discussing the agenda.
Right, you're getting informed, right. Now, the chair is allowed, or some staff is allowed, to send out to all of you the whole agenda, all of the attachments and everything. And then you keep them, and you don't reply all. Maybe you reply to Julie, maybe you reply to Tracy, allowed to do that all day long. But if you reply all and say, "Who in the tarnation's put this on the agenda? We are not gonna discuss this, this is the most," that's a violation of the open meeting law, right? You can't do that. You can reply to Tracy or to Julie, and you can say, "Tell Alicia to get that off the agenda, we don't want that on the agenda," right? That's, that's different, but you can't reply all.
You know, I've seen, that's, I like that, and I've been trying to figure out how to get that on the bottom of my emails, all of my emails.
On your signature, just use, update your signature, do you have a signature?
Do not reply all.
Like, so Outlook, you can, it's part of the signature block?
Just, like I have on my.
Do not reply all.
Right, I have like, like all this confidential stuff on my signature block, and then you, so you just, you can put whatever you want in your signature block.
Okay, so now, I have a legal question for you. If someone replies all, and I put on the bottom of my email, "Please do not reply all" because it would be breaking the open meeting law, and someone else does, is that a responsibility of mine?
Well, you're all, like you're all in it together, right? I mean, you're all the board, right? So you're all, if there's one violation, it is amongst all of you.
So if, so if somebody replies all, it's a violation to all of us.
You're all at fault.
So now, now the other thing I have to talk about in this are subcommittees, okay? So Alicia says, "We're gonna have a town hall building committee, and I want Leslie and Dana to serve on the town hall building committee." Leslie and Dana are now a subcommittee, and you must post all your meetings, you must keep minutes of your meetings, you get, you have to do all of that stuff, okay? Because you're now a subcommittee. Even if there's only two of you, even though there's five members in the board, you're now an official subcommittee, if you're the only ones on the committee, assuming.
Which is why I'll never do that.
Right, so, so, so just remember, when you're appointed as a subcommittee. Now, she might say, "Bill, I want you to go be the liaison to the council on aging." Well, that's not a subcommittee, you're one person, right? So you go off, and you're now, you got a bunch of other people doing stuff too, right? So you have to be careful in a subcommittee situation.
That's why I did only put one Dana on the one committee, building committee.
We could be here for two or three hours, which I don't, which I don't wanna be, but that, that topic, it came up in the last select board meeting of, of now people who are in elected positions being appointed.
We're reviewing it, yeah.
I mean, have you researched that, like for example, me being on S6 veterans? Is that okay or is it not okay?
We're, it's, there are a bunch of nuances, and some of you are okay, some of you are not okay. So we're reviewing all of it, and we're looking at the bylaws.
So that's a later date.
It's a later date.
All right, press on.
So this is more about deliberation, and so if you get an email from Julie, like, that says, attaches the agenda, blah, 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 and it looks on it, says whatever it says on there, please do not reply back to all.
Right.
I, I think I should do this, or I, I think you should talk about that. That's a, no matter, if it's on the agenda, it's a violation.
Right.
So please don't.
Also executive session. So the exemption for the open meeting law is to go into executive session. And the board of selectmen probably have more authority to go in the executive session than just about anybody else other than a school committee or planning board, zoning board in litigation. But you would go in for purposes of litigation, for purposes of negotiating the value of property if you're gonna take it or buy it or sell it, for purposes of employee negotiations, employment contract negotiations. So those are some reasons that you would go into executive session. When you go into executive session, it has to be on the agenda. You first open in a public session, and then somebody makes a motion to go into executive session for a specific purpose. If the litigation is ongoing, the name of the litigation has to be on the, on the, in the motion and on the agenda. We usually draft these for you. Then it's a roll call vote to go in, the chair announces whether you're gonna come back into public session afterwards. You go into executive session, you do your duty in executive session, and then you have a roll call to come back out of executive session. The minutes of executive session are never released until the matter for which the executive session was held is over. And then the board votes to have those released in executive session, then they come into open session and they release the votes, I mean, the minutes. But executive session is a matter that is confidential amongst the board because it has to do with negotiations and/or strategy, things that are important to the town.
I think there are a couple of pending issues that Julie still has executive session minutes that are still, they haven't been resolved, so she's still holding them.
Yeah.
We may need to come.
I have a town that has executive session minutes for a matter that has been going on for 20 years, and they're not released because the matter's still going on. So it really depends on, you know, there are other things, contract negotiations, as soon as those are done, those get released.
Yeah.
Okay, the big change in the open meeting law comes with public comment. I've done two trainings on this already, some of you have been to those trainings. So public comment, there was an SJC case that came out a couple of months ago, Barron versus Kalenda, had to do with the town of Southborough before we represented them. And SJC decided the Southborough Civility Code violated Article 16 and 19 of the Massachusetts Constitution. And so Southborough had a civility code, the select board did, that basically said if you're gonna speak in front of the select board, you have to be courteous and respectful and nice and kind, and don't say bad things. And the SJC said, "No, if you're gonna have public comment," which you're not required to have, "but if you're going to have public comment, then you can only regulate time, place, and manner, but not content." So you can't tell a person that they can't yell and scream at you, or you can't tell a person that they can't call somebody bad names or say things about employees. But you can say, "We're gonna have public comment, it's gonna be at the beginning of the meeting for 10 minutes, everybody has two minutes, and then you have to sit down." As long as you enforce that against everybody. You're not required to have public comment. There's a difference between public comment in a public meeting and comment in a public hearing. So Leslie's used to, and Jeff's used to, public hearings where there's the planning board, and the planning board chair always takes, and you are required to take, comments pro and con on a particular matter. And the chair can limit those comments to the subject matter, that's content, but you're allowed to on specific agenda items. You're allowed to limit content on specific agenda items because that's not public comment. That's in a public hearing related to the business of the board. Just like this doesn't apply to a town meeting. Town meeting is for a very specific purpose. The items on the agenda, excuse me, on the warrant, and that's what it's for. And that's a legislative session. And so this case does not apply to legislative sessions or specific agenda items or public hearings. It only applies if you're gonna allow a public comment period in your public meeting, which you're not required to have. Now, you're all elected officials, and it's hard not to have public comment and hear from the citizens, right? So if you have public comment, our recommendation is you're very clear about your policy and your rules, and they're applied equally to everybody, okay? Anybody have any questions about this?
Do we have a policy?
Not yet.
You're gonna get one, you have a draft.
When are we gonna get to see it?
You have to create it.
You have to create it, so you have a draft.
When are we gonna, when are we gonna do that?
Well, when do you want it? If you tell me when you want to do it, and we'll add it to the agenda.
Well, let's wait for. Not this week.
No, Lisa has given us a draft, I don't know if you've seen a copy of it. I know Bill and Leslie, I don't think.
I handed them out at my training session, so.
But they was, that was only for the chairs and the vice chairs. So there is, I'll have Julie send it to you, you can review it yourself, I'll add it as an agenda item, we'll have like a working meeting.
And that's a draft, that's like a, imagine that draft as being like anything you want to do, right? So you can tailor that draft to suit your needs, like it's wide open, right? There are lots of things you guys are gonna need to do for yourself in that draft.
We can take things out, we can leave things in, they don't have to be taken as one big thing.
Should we do that as a, as a, like what we're doing right now? Or should we do it at a select board meeting?
No, it has to be at a select board meeting.
Well, or a workshop is what he's saying, right?
I mean, why can't, we can have an open meeting workshop to just, to just talk about that. To just talk about that item. Or we could do it during a select board.
So the other thing you can do, Dana, is you could... If you all took that draft, made comments on it, you could send those comments... Listen to what I'm saying. Send those comments to Julie or Tracy, who could compile those comments. And then, as part of your packet that becomes a public document, send that out so that you guys have a starting point, instead of going back over... Back and forth over every word in a meeting. That way, everybody has seen what your other comments are. So the interesting thing about what I just said is, that goes back to a staff person, right? And then, when you all see it, it's a public document, because it's part of your agenda and your packet. So that's not a violation of the open meeting law, so long as it's made public to everybody at the same time, okay? So you could do that.
But if you analyze a policy or whatever, no more and no less than Southborough's policy of civility. We can't supersede a Supreme Court judicial hearing.
Yeah, so... Right.
So I was thinking in the middle of the night last night...
I'm sorry.
Or maybe two nights ago. Let alone a policy, if we had actually a contract with the people that came to our selectman's meeting on any given night to have public comment that would be controlled by the chair, and we have a contract for a night with the people that came if we wanted discussion, and they would live under the rules of...
What does the contract say?
Right. What's the contract say?
The contract says if you're out of line, and the chair tells you, you can't sue the chair. So that's still... Even if every...
But it's clever, Jeff.
No, but even if everyone agrees to be in that meeting...
No.
And that's because we're elected officials.
That's like a prenuptial agreement, and they're useless.
No, it's not because you're elected officials. It's because it's a public meeting during public comment period. You can't control content, and you've asked them to control content in order for them to be able to participate. So you can't do that.
So even if you're not an elected official, and you're an auctioneer, I mean, it's a public meeting. That goes at those type of meetings, or is it governmental elected official type?
Under Massachusetts Open Meeting, like governmental public meetings, right? So the policy that I provided meets the requirements of this... There's a lot of things you can change in it, but I'm only asking you to change things that have to do with time, place, manner, right? Those are the kinds of things I've put in that, so... Okay?
Well, I like the idea of what you said about... First of all, I don't know if I... I don't think I've read it yet, but I don't know if I have a copy of it, but...
How last Julie to send it around?
I like the idea of us being able to look at it, have our own individual feedback, send that feedback to Julie, and then have her compile all of our feedbacks into one document. And then, when we have either a training session on just that topic, or we're doing it during a select board, it'll save a lot of time...
Yeah.
During the meeting itself.
So this is something if the board... I mean, I can... We can tackle it over the summer. I'll add it as an agenda item. Because summers are usually slow, maybe September.
But if you're really lethal about it, the Supreme Court ruling pretty much cuts through anything you want to try to put together.
Time, place, manner. You're allowed to do time, place, manner. I'm going to have public comment at the first part of the meeting for 10 minutes. Every person's allowed to speak two minutes. Allowed to do that.
See, that's the thing that I have a problem with, is I don't really watch the two minutes.
Somebody needs to watch the two minutes, because what happens...
I listen to what they're saying.
But because what naturally happens, human nature...
Yeah.
You like what you're hearing, so you just sit back and let it happen. You don't like what you're hearing, and it's offensive in some way, and you're like, "When is this going to be over?" Right? That's human nature. It's absolutely human nature. So I have many of my communities who have its... They... Like, if they have a Zoom up, or if they have a watch in town, somebody, the chair says, "Bill, get your phone out and put your timer on."
I used to do that with JR.
And so 10 minutes, 10 minutes, 2 minutes, 10 minutes, whatever. Now, you have a really important thing on the agenda, and your policy is 10 minutes at the beginning of the agenda, and 30 people show up. And you know they all want to talk. So 30 times 2 is not 10, right? I'm a lawyer, but I do know that much math. So what happens is, your policy should be flexible enough to say, at the chair's discretion, at the beginning of the meeting, if it's clear that there's a large number of people that want to speak, the chair may modify these limitations.
But can't they speak under that particular agenda item only?
No.
It's not an agenda item.
No.
No, no. If it is an agenda item, though...
You mean during, like, the meeting as the meeting progresses?
But that's not public comment. So the question is, are you going to... So this is the other question.
Okay.
Do you allow the public to speak on each agenda item?
Well, only if they're here for that one agenda item, like...
No, no, you've got to make a rule. You've got to have a policy, right?
Yes, yes, we need a policy.
So you can't...
It's actually... We're talking about two different things.
No, no, because that's how you run your meeting. So I have a community, a three-member Board of Selectmen, and, you know, it's a really small town, right? And their meetings used to go on for hours. And they said, "Lisa, we should come out for one of our meetings, so we can help us out about how we do this," right? So their meeting was like a coffee clutch, right? So they have an agenda, so the board starts to talk about an agenda item, and they invite everybody to start to debate the agenda item together, like they're all doing it together an hour later, right?
That's not appropriate, is it?
No, but that's my point about your earlier comment, right? So you have to decide... You let people speak, no matter what the agenda item is, in public comment. If you allow people to speak during an agenda item, on that agenda item, now you've opened up the other part of the meeting to having the public speak on an agenda item, right? So what's to say that they can't speak all at the beginning of the meeting on an agenda item, right? You see there's 30 people here, so you give them 30 minutes and a minute apiece, or you give them 60 minutes and 2 minutes apiece, right? But you have to be careful about that road you go down, and inviting everybody to speak on every agenda item.
You don't remember my reading thing.
I know, I do.
But so, if it's called public comment at the beginning of a meeting, can it be called discussion during the meeting, so it's not really public meeting, so the Supreme Court doesn't have the ability to...
No, so if you're going to allow comment during an agenda item, then you can limit it to that agenda item.
See, so that might be...
But you can't... That's the content. But if they start to yell and scream about that content, you've got to let them go.
Yeah. No, just about that. Because like, for instance, the last, we had two different agenda items at our last meeting. And they... Yeah. And it was helpful to the board, I think, to have... Hear what they had to say.
On that agenda item.
Only on that agenda item.
What I want to be careful of is, again, you should be careful about time, place, manner on the agenda item. And if they're getting heated about that agenda item, you're not going to be able to cut them off, even though it's about that agenda item, right? So you can limit that content to the agenda item, but if they're getting heated about it...
We have to take it.
You've got to take it.
And we can't shut them off, because we haven't shut anybody else off.
Correct.
Well, if someone's becoming terrifically, outlandishly outspoken about someone, they open them up to a public liability lawsuit. You know, I mean...
Well, that's... Right. But that you guys can't... That's up to... I mean, that's...
I think one way to control that... I think it went really well the last select board meeting.
Well, because we haven't had somebody do what she says is going to do.
Right. But I mean, one way to control that psychologically is just don't deliberate with anybody. It's not a deliberate...
No, right. That's a good point.
When someone wants to talk about an agenda item...
Yeah, we'll take information in.
Yeah.
Right.
You can comment on their comment. You can say whatever you want, but don't deliberate on it.
It's not a discussion.
It's not a colloquy. Right. So, right. So if you're going to have people talk, let them talk, and you guys just hold back, right? And when everybody's done, then you all talk amongst yourselves about what was said.
Hey, I don't have the answer to that, but thank you very much for bringing it to our attention.
Then, when we start talking, and they... And we talk about it, and they don't like the direction where it's going, and they interrupt...
No.
Wait a minute. No, no. I have to say, "Excuse me, your time is up. This is the board discussing. We're discussing amongst the board, not with the public."
Correct. Correct.
Right.
That's...
All right. So that's your policy. Those are all things you're going to have to talk about in your policy.
Yeah.
All right.
Don't forget, Dana, write it down.
I'm not going to forget, because I've been thinking a lot about this.
Don't forget. Okay.
All right. Public records. Here's the golden rule. Everything you put in writing, whether it's on your personal email, a town email if you had one, notepad, if it's about your job as a selectman, it's a public record, okay? Those are the rules. Voice recordings, text messages, emails, handwritten notes, those are all public records, if you're doing it in your role as a member of the Board of Selectmen, okay? If you have notes, let's say... Let's say a constituent sent you a letter. They wanted this confidential letter. X... Once it gets to you, it's not confidential, by the way, anymore. Sending you a confidential letter, and you're... You want to be respectful of that, and you want to go at a meeting, and you want to talk about, you know, generally speaking, what the constituent said to you, whatever discussion time you have. And you pull out that letter in the meeting, and you refer to it. That has become a public document in that meeting, and it gets attached to the agenda, okay? So documents referred to in a meeting, documents created that you create as part of your official position, email, even if it's on personal email, personal computers, and if you're responding to a public records request... I'll talk to you about responding to a public records request. So those are all public documents.
So just by you mentioning something that a constituent said, and it's caused you to think about something, "Someone brought this to my attention." That now becomes public record? His email to me becomes public record?
No. If you printed out that email...
And brought it into the meeting.
And brought it into the meet... Well, let me say to you, as soon as he emails it to you, that's a public record. If he called you on the... If he wrote you a letter and handed it to you, that's a public record, only if somebody asks for it.
So every time anyone emails or texts me, it's public record?
Correct. If it's about your official business. Now, what I was referring to, Jeff, is let's say somebody sent you a letter, and if you kept it at home, nobody would ever know you had it, right? And nobody's probably going to make a public records request about it. But if you bring it to a meeting, bring the letter to a meeting, and in the meeting you refer to the letter in your comments, that's now a public record at that meeting, and gets attached to the agenda, should get attached to the agenda, okay?
In the minutes.
So in the minutes. And so the whole email thing, I just have to... This was now probably 10 to 15 years ago. I had members of the Board of Selectmen, and they were new, new to government, and despite this training that I had with them, they had all kinds of emails back and forth, and they were just stirring up all kinds of trouble. And the newspaper, the local newspaper, the Metro West Daily News, the Metro West newspaper made a public records request of all of... So they'd been there about a year and a half. All of their emails related to their job as the Board of Selectmen, right? Now, they didn't have town emails. They had personal emails. So they had to print out all of their emails, because they had... Newspaper had seen some of them. They had to print out all of their emails for me, and I went through every single one of their emails before we turned them over, because they also had confidential stuff in their emails, so we had to redact it. And I kid you not, when I tell you I had stacks of documents, that town spent so much money on public records requests for six months because of those two, that they were just... It was a wreck, right? And so they were very careless about what they did on email, and how they talked on email, but it all became public record. And so it's more of a warning and an FYI, obviously, you're going to do business on email, but knowing that it's public record, my reminder is, be professional, courteous, because imagine the world reading that, right?
So we're as important as the president.
That's exactly right.
Well, and you know, in that... In regards to that, I've been working hard for like over a year now to try and get my personal... All my personal email addresses, because I have three of them that I use, away from... Which is why I think it's a good idea to only use your town email address.
Right.
Because it's on our server. You would never have to print them all out, because they're all on our server.
Right.
And they're available to anybody that wants to look at them. And like even Matt here, you know, our... I can look on our... If you look on our group, I'm talking the entire town, you'll see, like on there, you'll see one of my personal email addresses.
Right.
And I want that taken off. And I... All of my conversations I want to happen...
On here.
On my town email address.
That makes it much easier.
It makes it... And the good thing about that is, is when you know that's the address that you're using, you're more conscious of what you're talking about.
Right.
And you're more careful about what you say, and...
Right.
Who, you know... So it's a good technique.
Yeah. It's good.
I think, so... I think, so. But I'm working on that.
Okay. So then, the conflict of interest law. Okay, so here's the general rule, and there's, I could, I do two hour seminars on this, but I'm not gonna do, I'm gonna give you general rules. So let me tell you, you all have to take the conflict of interest test every two years. It's online through the State Ethics Commission. Frankly, you can't fail, because they won't let go forward if you don't get the right answer. So you just gotta keep getting the right answer. But the general rule is do not use your official position to gain an advantage that a private citizen would not otherwise be entitled to. That's the general rule, okay? That's, that, that is, don't do something that you don't think somebody else would be able to do. I'll give you, I was, when I was mayor, I came home for lunch one day, and this guy from the DPW was in a yard, mowing the yard with clearly a city lawnmower, right? And he said, well, I can do some on my own time. And I'm like, no, you can't do that on your own time, this is like city equipment. You can't like make money on somebody else's lawn at lunchtime with city equipment, you're not allowed to do that, right? So you just have to think about those kinds of things. And it's, you know, everybody's much more conscious of these, these things these days, and it's good. Opinions, reliance on the Ethics Commission and reliance on town council. So you're allowed, if you think you're gonna do something, or you, and this is before you do it, okay? You think you want to do something, be somewhere, accept a gift, do something. And you ask me first, I can give you an opinion. And you can, and if I finalize that opinion, you can rely on my opinion. Now, I have to send my opinion to the Ethics Commission and to the town clerk. And the Ethics Commission will affirm my opinion, and if I'm wrong, they'll tell me I need to fix it, right? Or you can get a written opinion from the Ethics Commission, and you can rely on that. So if, if the Ethics Commission is wrong, and they can't, they can't then penalize you because you in good faith relied on an Ethics Commission opinion.
But it has to be in writing.
Has to be in writing.
Because they tell you over the phone, too.
No, but, but the thing is, it only protects you in writing, because when you, people say things differently and, and don't ask the same questions than they might in writing. So if you have the facts in writing, the Ethics Commission is gonna give you an opinion on the facts you've given in writing, okay? The process that I use to give you an opinion, and again, it's before you've done something, is I ask you to give me the facts, then I do a draft opinion, and I give you the draft opinion for you to confirm that my facts are correct. And then you see the draft opinion, and you can decide whether or not, A, you want to go forward with what you're doing, and me finalize my opinion, or you don't want to go forward with what you're doing, and we don't finalize the opinion and we're done. All right? So before you act, now let me also tell you, sometimes you forget, and you have to ask me something after you've done something. And you can ask me that, because I'm not the Ethics Commission, and I'll tell you verbally what my opinion is. You can't call the Ethics Commission if you have already done something, because they are an enforcement agency. And they will tell you that, when you pick up the phone and call them, they'll say, you have to ask me about something that you haven't yet done. And if you've already done it, we can't have this conversation. Because they are an enforcement agency. So if you've already done it, and it violates a conflict of interest law, they have to take enforcement action. Okay? So keep that in mind, always ask before you do. And you could always pick up the phone and call me, and we can have a conversation about it. Okay? Anybody have any questions about this at all?
Can you talk about disclosures?
Um, yeah, so let me just go through the, also for the rest of this. You don't take gifts over $50, and that's the fair market value, not the face value of a gift. So you might remember Tom Finneran a few years ago took a gift of a bunch of Red Sox tickets, they were in the playoffs, and the face value was like $40, but the real value of the ticket was like $400, right? So it's the, it's the real value of the ticket, not the face value of the ticket. So no gifts over $50. If somebody comes in, I come in, I give you a basket of fruit from Harry and David's, which we all know is more than $50, but I give it to all of you, and you share it, or you share it with staff, that's okay. You're allowed to do that, because it's a community kind of gift. Training sessions versus trips. So you can take money to do a training session on the Cape with the MMA, sponsored by whatever, and they pay for your way to do that, you're allowed to do that. The fire chief can't take a trip to Minnesota to see the fire truck being constructed in Minnesota by the contractor, and believe me, this company, and they're in Minnesota or Wisconsin, I can't remember where they are, we have this question once a year from a fire truck, fire chief who's getting a new fire truck, and that company says, hey, we'll pay your way. Of course, first of all, I mean, I'm from the Midwest, nobody wants to go to Minnesota or Wisconsin. So we'll pay your way to Minnesota or Wisconsin, and you come out here and see the fire truck, and we'll put you up in a hotel. You can't do that, that's a gift, you're not allowed to take that gift with this, people doing business with the town. So there's a difference between training sessions and gifts. You may not represent a third party before the town while a member of the board, okay? So you can't, let's say, you want to advocate on behalf of a contractor in front of the town. You can't do that. You can't represent a third party in front of the town when they're against the town. Okay? And then disclosures. So what do you, what kind of disclosure, like, which, what particular kind, I'm just, there's like.
Well, for instance, there's been several, my husband owns a business in Newburyport, there's been several complaints about, from him, the Council on Aging doing business with him.
Right.
Well, I filed a public disclosure with the town clerk twice now.
Right.
So that, first of all, I don't think that has anything to do with me, because I don't.
Well, right, so you don't have authority over that.
I don't have authority over that at all, so it's not a conflict.
Right.
But I still filed a disclosure as a belting suspended.
If there's an appearance of a conflict, if people think, sorry about that. So there's an appearance of a conflict, you can get rid of the appearance by filing a public disclosure. Like, look, I'm not doing anything wrong here, here's a public disclosure, I'll give you an example. Town treasurer used to work for, did anybody remember Kelly's Collection Service? They used to do debt collections. So Kelly's Collection Service, they used to do collections for all the town clerks. So this town treasurer used to work for Kelly's Collection Service. Then she became the town treasurer. They went out to bid, a year later, they went out to bid for collection services. Kelly's won the bid. Well, what she did before the bids came in, she, because she knew Kelly's would respond, because they are one of three collection agencies. So she filed a disclosure with this town clerk saying, I used to work for Kelly's, but I don't work for them anymore, I have no financial connection with them anymore. And when Kelly's came in, they were the low bid, and they got the contract. But there was a disclosure filed, because she was worried about the appearance of a conflict, like somehow they would be favored. In that instance, she had to take the low bidder anyway, so that was helpful to her. So you can file a disclosure many times, not all the time. Oftentimes where you appoint somebody who might also be an employee, the employee has to do a disclosure to their appointing authority in order to be able to hold a second position. But these are all very unique situations, and so we would tell you and give you the right disclosure forms to file.
And you file with the clerk.
File with the town clerk, and it's public record. Also, here's another one, gifts, this is just a more specific one, gifts generally over $50 are prohibited. The exemptions are the gift to the group, I gave you the gift example. We had a group during COVID, a group of first responders in a big town, where a bank bought tickets to, I don't know, the Red Sox or the Patriots or whatever, for the fire chief to give to firefighters. And so what we worked with the Ethics Commission, and what happened was, let's call, they had 10 tickets. The fire chief said he wouldn't take a ticket, and then he put the other tickets in a lottery, and they were given to the other firefighters through the lottery, even though the bank did, you know, most of them did business with the bank and things like that. So that was okay, that was like a gift to the group. Also, gifts that are not related to your official position. So let's say that you get a gift of a dinner and an event by somebody that's a friend of yours, and you get to go to the event, and it's clearly, you know, they serve lobster and steak and champagne and really good bourbon, and it's an expensive event, right? But it was a gift to you and other people paid to go there, but it was a friend of yours, and had nothing to do with your official position. You're allowed, you're allowed to do that. Now, if that person then comes before the board on a matter related to that later, and you didn't know about it, you would have to disclose, disclose it and exempt yourself from that particular vote within six months after you got the gift. Okay? All right. And I think that's it. Any questions? How about that? Pretty good timing, huh?
Excellent timing.
Any questions?
I have to go home and cook dinner now.
Sorry, we could stay a little longer, Leslie.
Is that a conflict going to?
Anybody have any other questions about any of that? So, look, always feel free to call me. You're allowed to call, ask any questions. If I can answer a question, we're gonna answer for you. Your conflict of interest questions are confidential, so the law, the statute particularly.
Is it your firm, so we should call your firm?
Oh, yeah, the firm.
And ask for you.
Actually, you can go through Lisa, I mean, go through Julie, no?
Yeah, go, you can ask Julie for the number, and, yeah, or, or have Julie say Dana wants, wants a call, and then I'll just call.
Okay, that, that'll work too. Yeah, because I've never actually known how to call you.
Well, I'm, I'm listed in a lot of places. If you look at, I, I'm on all the letterhead, and the phone number's on the letterhead, I'm on the, we have a website.
Yep.
I actually pick up the phone when you call.
And she, you also hold office hours with the town in Newbury, right?
I do hold office hours, once a month or every other, twice a month, I can't remember exactly how they are. But you sign up, Julie has the times, and you sign up, department heads sign up for them. We've been, we do either virtual or in-person, depending on how many people want and what the purpose is.
And you have to kind of give her some background of why you want to meet with us, so she can do any research.
And then we come over and have a discussion and.
So Watkins are welcome.
Nope, Watkins aren't, you gotta be scheduled.
But I will, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You have to be scheduled, because other people in town, like, you know, department heads are meeting up. But yeah, you can, you can come sit down and talk to me about it. Or Zoom or whatever, as we're doing that particular week.
You thought those pictures were pretty, you should see her Zoom pictures.
Oh, right.
Get behind the, on top of the river. Get the bridge behind her.
This is my first year pandemic picture.
I motion that we end the training session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Lisa, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.